Earlier today, he wasn't sure just with the power issues if he was coming in or not, but he is planning to attend the meeting.
Okay, well, we will begin without him if he is able to join. Let's see, unless I can call them all, please.
Councilmember Derwin?
Here.
Councilmember Richards?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Here.
Mayor Hughes?
Here.
Councilmember Alex will possibly join.
Okay, agenda item two, out of closed session. We did not have a closed session. Did we?
Yeah, I'm sorry. That language was left over from the previous meeting. We did, we did have a closed session. We discussed the cease and desist action that was a letter that was served on the town, and there was no reportable action as a result of that closed session.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on item two? Do not see any hands raised. So move on to item three, oral communications. If any member of the public would like to address a matter that is not on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand now, and you'll be able to do so. And Rita, I see your hand is up.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. First, I just want to mention that many people are in town, do not have electricity, and probably will not be able to participate on this call tonight. And the other thing earlier, thank you, Jeremy, for sending me the link of the comments that people have sent in for the Stanford draft EIR. And I had posted it on the PV forum, and people were quite grateful for having that link. So thank you again. But there were a couple of people that had commented to me that they had definitely submitted some comments by May 13th, and their comments were not showing up. I know that there was problems with the email, you know, Stanford EIR instead of Stanford DEIR at portolavalley.net. People were having bounce backs on that. But I'm not sure what kind of recourse, because people probably have proof of emails that they had sent that can be followed up on. And, you know, I think this is something very serious that the town, you know, could possibly look into and find a way for those participants to the residents to make sure that their comments are included, the ones that they spent time thinking that they were included. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rita. I see Jeremy's hand is up. Before I go to Jeremy, if you could reach out to town staff, Rita, and if you have names and contact info of people who think their comments have been left out, if you could put them in touch with staff, we can hopefully try and track it down. Jeremy, do you have anything additional?
Yeah, I was going to add that Rita, if any of those people contacted you would like to email me with the email that they sent to the town, then I would be happy to make sure that those are included in the comments. Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any other hands raised? Yes, I see David Cardinal.
Just a really quick comment. Well, Emerald Hills and frankly Stanford, which makes my work hard, are out of power. I think other than the two hours today, I'm not aware of people in Portola Valley having a real power issue. So if they are, PG&E doesn't show it. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next, I see Kristi Corley.
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate that I was disappointed the ad hoc housing element committee was held on holiday, Juneteenth, when it was a three-day holiday, and most people were away for the weekend. So I'm wondering why that occurred, and I'm also wondering why you would not have an ad hoc housing element meeting in the month of July, when you are planning to make approvals the next month. I think the public needs a chance to continue to discuss the issues around Ford Field Open Space and/or Dorothy Ford Open Space is still of question in a lot of people's minds, and they want to learn more about it. My second comment is, any changes to codes or guidelines? Can the public see that they're crossed out, and at what date did that occur? So we are of interest in those two items, and it's not always clear the exact date that things are changed. And I think we deserve to see a cross out and a correction, even with any agenda items, if they're crossed out and corrected, because often a new one's just put in, and we want to know the full story on it. Thank you so much. I am also concerned about the fire issue, and we saw many helicopters going down Alpine Road today, very loud, very low. It kind of rattled the whole community, and I thought you should be aware of that. And maybe you could give some more explanation as to what was happening today. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. I don't believe any of those helicopters were operated by the town, and probably PG&E, but Jeremy, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those were PG&E helicopters associated with the earlier power outage. The lines in town are part of an enhanced PG&E program. That means that when the tree limb hits the lines within a tenth of a second, those lines are disengaged. And in order to reengage the lines, PG&E must inspect them, and they use helicopters. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see no more hands raised. So close all communications. We move on to item four, which is a presentation by John Badger, the Chair of the Cultural Arts Committee, about a wildly successful PV Palooza. Go on.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm John Badger. I'm Chair of the Cultural Arts Committee, and I would like to talk about how PV Palooza went off. And actually, I'd like to thank everybody who was involved in helping to make it take place. I do think that it was a success. I'm very happy with how it went. Am I able to share my screen?
I believe you should, yeah.
Okay. So I'm aware that many were not able to attend. Unfortunately, it was a very hot day, and so many didn't make it because of the heat. So what I'll do is make the assumption that the audience was not there and give kind of an overview of what PV Palooza was. So many of you might recall it two years, well, two and a half years ago. Paige, who was at that time, Paige Bishop, who was at that time the Chair of the Cultural Arts Committee, and I made a presentation to the town council to seek approval of trying out PV Palooza as an event. And it was approved. The town council gave us the go-ahead to give it a shot. It involved sponsorship. We raised $25,000 from local sponsors, all right here in our neighborhood, and it was very well-funded, and we spent all of it. It's quite expensive to put on an event of this nature. I'll talk about that in a moment, but it's basically, it was an all-day music festival. This is, by the way, the website, you can check it out on your, on your computer, pvpalooza.com. And let me actually go to the homepage. So pvpalooza.com, by the way, there's images on the website that we used. You might have seen this banner throughout the town that was placed in a number of strategic locations throughout the town. We also made posters to promote the event. You can see that there were sponsors. There were different levels of sponsorship, donors, and different, you know, sponsors, silver, gold, and platinum. It got, you know, you can get larger or smaller versions of your logo, depending on how much you spend, and also you can sponsor a band, for example, who will announce you and thank you during their performance, et cetera, et cetera. And so we raised, like I said, $25,000. We had two stages. There was the soccer field stage here on the left, and then the performance lawn, which is where we've typically done these Thursday night summer concert series. And basically, our live audio crews went back and forth to set up for each new performance. And then we had, next to each main stage, we had a little side stage on which we would in some cases have some kids' performances, came for the cake, for example, as a kids' band, School of Rock, house band out of Palo Alto, a couple of the musicians are from Portola Valley. So the criteria here is every one of these bands has local roots. Either somebody lives or works in Portola Valley in the band or is a native of. And so really, it's local talent, and we had enough bands to fill two stages. And like I said, the audio teams would switch back and forth for the switchover, and during the breaks, we would have smaller acts that would perform on a slightly smaller, on a significantly smaller side stage. And it went over really well. And there were in total 66 musicians who performed throughout, you know, 11 different bands, a number of different kids' performances and so on, but 66 musicians played throughout the day. And let me just, I haven't taken time to put this into a presentation yet, but this will give you an idea. We had a photographer on site. I see one dude is in the way there. And you can get an idea of kind of the joy that was happening in the community here by looking at some of these photos. And we really, you know, saw a good turnout. Didn't get overwhelmingly crowded throughout the day because of the fact that the, you know, the heat kind of kept people away. This was the soccer field stage, and then we had a similar turnout on the smaller stage, the performance lawn stage. You know, this gives you an idea of the vibe on the performance lawn stage. So, you know, BYOB, people brought picnic blankets and coolers and really enjoyed themselves. So, and here you can see up on the wall, up on the side here, the sponsor, you know, thanking our sponsors who made the event happen. So great turnout, well timed in terms of, you know, just coming out of COVID and bringing the community together around music was very healing. I think a lot of people really enjoyed themselves, and I got tons of positive feedback and really no negative feedback or noise complaints or anything. I was, you know, it was pretty loud music, so I was expecting maybe one or two complaints, but there were, there were none. So I think, you know, all in all, it was considered a success, and we are hoping to get approval to, you know, do this again in 2023 and beyond.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any councilmember questions?
Can I make a comment, or is it just questions?
You can make a comment if you would like to make.
Okay, thank you, John and team, for such a fantastic event, brought the community together, and reminded us all that even though we may disagree, we have much in common. And thank you for giving us all hope for kinder and more musical days ahead.
Oh, thank you. And before I forget, I would like to continue that thread of thank yous, because the committee worked really hard to put this together, and it's a really multi-skilled, multi-talented committee who's willing to roll up their sleeves and get stuff done. You can't imagine the myriad of tasks involved in making this happen, and everybody was super responsive, always available. And that doesn't just go for the committee members. I was just astounded how willing members of the town staff were to jump in and help with everything, and there was a ton of work. So Jeremy and the rest of the team really supported us on this, and I wanted to make sure to thank them as well.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to thank John and everyone, our staff, the committee, everybody, the musicians, everyone. I remember in, it must have been February or so of 2020, that was pre-pandemic, I was chairing one of my first meetings as mayor, and, and John and Paige came to us with this idea for PV Palooza. You know, to think of what the world looked like then and what we thought the summer of 2020 was going to look like, and the fact that we're finally, that you were finally able to do this now, it's really great to see this come together, and we have so much talent out here. It's just amazing. It always amazes me to see what all of our local talent steps up and does these things. And, and, you know, and I mean, I feel like they're there to perform on a moment's notice. It's, it's a great thing. So thank you. I was not able to attend partly because of the heat, but I was, I heard it was, I heard it was a great event, and I look forward to seeing this. I would love to see this continuing. So, you know, two and a half years ago, I did offer, you know, the council actually had our own band, and I did offer our services, and you guys seemed a little hesitant on that. So I, we're here, we're here if you ever want to, we could talk later, but one day.
Yes, I.
I'm joking, we are not, aside from, aside from John, I don't think, well, I will speak for myself, I am not musically talented at all, so.
Nor am I.
I'll take the triangle. Just I'll pull that off.
So I just want to add my thanks, and I think the perspective that I can add that hasn't been said is sitting on the CAC meetings over the last several months, and John is, it's, it's amazing, John, you're like such a calm and easygoing, optimistic, positive leader in the whole process. And it just, you know, when you see how it came together, and it was incredible, I just did a drive-through or a walk-through. I had to be at a lacrosse tournament that day, but I did come swing by. It just, to think that the, the efforts from those meetings where you always just sounded so relaxed and so organized, you know, came together in the way that it did was amazing. I mean, it was just such a robust, you know, event, and yet your, your meetings were like so calm, so there was no chaos, there was, it just seemed like a well-oiled machine all along. And I just was impressed with your, your leadership throughout. And if this is the first annual, I can't imagine what will happen with the next one. So definitely would be fully supportive of seeing that happen. So thank you.
Thank you, and I can tell you that we learned a ton. This was a first of, and there were a lot of mistakes made. I think, you know, no, no negatives in terms of it came out great, and we're all super excited about how it came out. But because it was the first event, we also learned a ton, and so we'll be applying those learnings for next year. And we're really excited about it, and thanks for the support.
John?
Yeah, well, I'm really glad to hear that the rumors about our committees getting too old to do anything are false, and really congratulations on a great job. I look forward to next year, too. Thanks a lot, John.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, and I would just like to add my thanks, John. I've heard from, I mean, I, obviously, there were lots and lots of people involved in all kinds of things, and I've heard from many of them that your driving force helped pull the whole thing together and coordinate it all and make it the success that it was. So thank you very much to you, to the committee, and to everybody else who helped make this such a great event. And I agree, continuing into future years, as, as long as people are willing to do it and pull it off again. I think it was such a success that it would be a real shame not to continue it.
Great.
Thank you. Jeremy, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, from the staff perspective, I first wanted to thank John for the kind comments. It was a lot of fun to work with you on this over the last few months. I know the staff was delighted to work on such an exciting event for the residents that we serve, and I spent about an hour and a half there. My parents were in town from Los Angeles, so my wife and I took them around, listened to some music, really enjoyed ourselves, and just a personal appreciation for what a delightful day it was. Thanks.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item? See no hands raised from the public. So thank you very much again, John, and everybody involved with this, and thank you for the presentation tonight. I look forward to seeing it come back on the agenda for authorization for next time.
Great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Should I sign off now?
You are welcome to, or you can stay if you'd like.
Run while you can.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item five, our consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are voted on by the body as one item unless an item is pulled by a member. Members of public may speak on any item on the consent agenda, and if you would like to do so, would you please raise your hand now? I see no hands raised. Are there any council questions or anybody like to pull an item? If not, I would train a motion.
I'll move approval.
Move by John.
Second.
Second by Sarah and Jeff. Call it all, please.
Councilmember Derwin?
I.
Councilmember Alex?
Hi.
Councilmember Richards?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernicke?
Yes.
Mayor Hughes?
Hi.
Motion here.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I tried to contact you a little earlier, just before the meeting, and I didn't jump in here in time. We have actually in the attendees tonight, our current Redwood City IT consultant, Jesus Reyna. And my apologies again, and I know the item's been voted upon, but I wanted to recognize Jesus, who's been with us for a number of years. Just one of the kindest, most delightful people that we've ever had an opportunity to work with, never too busy to take probably some ridiculous and bizarre questions from us on a variety of IT-related issues. We're sure going to miss you, Jesus. You're irreplaceable, and we really thank your bosses in Redwood City for allowing you to serve with us for so long. So thank you, and not to put you on the spot or anything like that at all. You're welcome to say a few things if you want, or just wave at us if you want to.
Oh, no, actually, if I, if I may, honestly, you're an incredible, incredible group of people. The kindness that everyone has shown me in the time that I've been able to help and try to assist, it's easy to want to help people that are very, very dedicated, and you have an incredible staff, a beautiful town hall, the area around you is amazing. I'm going to really miss the long drives, I promise. I'm going to try to come out there a little bit more and maybe just say hi to everyone, but it's been an immense pleasure, and honestly, I will miss working with all of you. You've always been really, really great people, and I can't say enough about you as well. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Hopefully, our paths cross again.
Hope so. Please come visit. You're welcome.
I will, I will, thank you.
We want, I'll show you our phones, so we'll.
No problem.
Purely friendly, yeah.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Jeff?
I just, I just wanted to say, I, I don't think we've ever actually met, but I've, I've heard so much about you, and, and you saved our bacon on many, many occasions. So thank you. And yes, I, you know, it's, it's been great. I know the staff has really appreciated the work you've done, and so, you know, yeah, yeah, come visit and, and come visit, come visit when something's not blowing up. So take care.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on to item six A and six B, the budget and our appropriations limits. And Cindy, Jeremy, over to you guys.
Thank you. We'll turn it over to Cindy Rodes, our Finance Director.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Okay. Oh, good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. My name is Cindy Rodes, Finance Director with Portola Valley. Tonight, we're here to present the final proposed fiscal year 2022-23 budget. In our presentation tonight, we will be looking at some detail related to revenues, expenditures, as well as budget changes incorporated from the June 8th council meeting. At the end of the presentation, we'll be happy to take any questions or comments. As presented previously, the budget reflects a strong relationship to the approved council priorities, which include wildfire and emergency preparedness, focus on land use projects and programs, sustainability, operational and service delivery enhancements, diversity, inclusion, and equity. Along with the council priorities, staff will be presenting quarterly updates on the priorities beginning in October 2022. This budget also includes general fund support to capital. We did incorporate some changes with the use of ARPA to reduce the overall impact of the general fund, some changes in town staff, growth in town staff, continued expenditures for general plan work, and then additional increases through the public safety contract. In this view here, we have a summary of all funds, sources, and requirements. From this view, we reflect changes to revenues over the budget presented on June 8th. However, total, total sources increased under the operating transfers in category, as well as appropriated fund balance. In the requirements category, there was a slight increase in employee services for a total gross appropriations amount of $11,146,419, and an increase to capital transfers out for a total of $575,674. In our next slide, we have a similar view related to general fund. Summary of revenues and expenditures, also broken down by categories. Again, there was no change in revenues from the budget presented on June 8th, but an overall increase in appropriated fund balance of $113,309. This total includes $112,600 as a transfer to capital projects fund for maintenance work on town-owned open space, plus a slight increase of $709 in employee services. Under revenues and expenditures related to general fund, there is, as previously reported, an increase in revenues primarily attributed to a growth in property tax, sales and use tax, and charges for services, which include the updates from the fee schedule, which incorporate increases by CPI of 5.2%. We also continued modest, modest budgeting for the return of recreation classes and a few private events for the new fiscal year, of which we experienced revenue loss during the pandemic. Under the expenditures, along with the increases that we included in the fee schedule of CPI of 5.2%, we also incorporated that cost of living adjustments for employee services and benefits. The increased increases within employee services and benefits support the growth in staff, including for new positions. As previously reported, these are the Development Review Technician in the Planning Department, Full-Time Maintenance Worker Position in Public Works, Full-Time Accounting Technician in the Finance Department, a Part-Time Assistant to the Town Manager under the Administration Department. a part-time assistant to the town manager under the administration department. The accounting technician and part-time position will be funded by the ARPA program. Also, I did want to review some changes that we incorporated in this version of the budget. This list includes a new section under the appendix for ARPA, which include expenditures, line item expenditures, as well as details of what the projects are and then what departments these expenditures will be reflected under. We also did incorporate the elimination of open space fund UUT revenue for the use of maintenance and expenditures related to maintenance on a town-owned property. Within the development plan review technician position, the original budget reflected this position only under the planning department. So, we have made an adjustment in this budget to allocate 50% to planning, 50% to the building department with no overall impact in, in the general fund. We did include a modest merit increase in the town manager department, which was just 1% and overall increase of $709. And then we did also include a correction within a line item for ALPR software, which was reflected under the public works department. Originally, it was identified under the miscellaneous consultants. So, we made that correction and it is now listed under software and licensing. At this point, I will take any questions or comments that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Are there any council member questions? Or staff? No, I don't see any. So, I will go to the public then. Are there any public comments on this item? And I see no hands raised from the public. So, I'll bring it back to council. Any discussion? No, I would say thank you very much, Cindy. I know it's been a huge amount of work as it is every year for you and all the senior staff who give you their input to feed into this product. And I think the, the effort really shows. It's, it's a great budget, very clear. You've incorporated pretty much everything I pointed out as, as we were going through the latter stages of this. So, the whole thing makes a lot of sense to me now and I think reflects our feedback from, from our last meeting. So, thank you very much for all the work. Is there, we need to approve this budget, right? And then separately authorize the appropriations limit. Is that correct?
Correct. The appropriation limit is the next item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so that will be a separate item and you'll give us a little more info on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then is there a motion on the budget? Oh, Jeff, I see your hand is up.
Sorry, I will move approval of the budget and I was just gonna just echo your thanks of Jeremy, Cindy, Jim, staff, and the various, you know, all of the committees and volunteers who have offered feedback on us. I think it's, 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 it looks great. Every year it gets better and clearer and we, and we have a better, you know, better feel for where everything's coming from and where it's going. So, thank you all. And again, I moved approval.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Sarah and John. Melissa, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Durin.
I.
Councilmember Alex.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernicke.
Hi.
Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us then to item six B on the appropriations limit.
Thank you. Just a really quick introduction. We're recommending tonight that council adopt the resolution along with the fiscal year 2022-23 appropriations limit. This year in calculating the limit, we did, we do show that the appropriation limit for the town is $4,212,097. The amount, the amount subject to limitations is $4,211,832, which is $265 below the limit. There are a number of different contributing factors that include Portola Valley, which include Portola Valley is a higher property tax community with assessed valuation. So, there, there will be continued analysis within our revenues, revenue sources as we continue to factor this in for the coming years.
Thank you. Are there any council questions on this item? Jeff?
Thanks. So, I sort of remember this from a few years back where we were, at one point, we were bumping up against the appropriation limits. And I think this was back, I think Nick was actually still our town manager. We sort of were able to reclassify some things and sort of exclude some things from it. Is this, are we, we're coming up close again? Is that just the trend that we're, our property taxes are going up faster than that population indexed appropriations limit? Is that, is that, I mean, I feel like we haven't talked about this in a while and I'm just trying to, it seems, just trying to see what, you know, feel for what the new trend is or what the current trend is.
Yeah, I can, I can start and Cindy and Jim can jump in if there's additional information. No, this is not a trend. I really see this as a kind of a one-year issue. So, I'm not expecting in the next years to run into appropriation limit issues. Jim, Cindy, anything you want to add?
No, the only other additional thing I would like to add is partially there was additional, because of the additional revenue that we're receiving from ARPA, then there was less general fund expenditures. So, that impacted our numbers this year a bit. But because we will no longer be continuing with that, the ARPA revenue, we don't see this as being an ongoing issue.
Got it. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Because I was actually gonna ask if ARPA had something to do with it for this year, and it sounds like it does. If, if, if that's the case, if there are future years where something extraordinary happens and there's some massive bailout program like ARPA or, you know, transfer of funds from the state or the feds to us, is that something that we should talk to, you know, our state legislators about to ensure that we don't trip over the appropriations limit potentially? Because, you know, of whatever emergency funding we may be getting from some source like that?
Actually, yes. We'll keep that in mind if we, hopefully, we don't have any more crises that require the yeah, injection of these kinds of funds in the future, but we'll certainly keep that in mind.
Thank you. Let's see, any more council questions? If not, I will see if there's any public comments. Is there anybody from the public would like to comment on this item? I see none, so I will bring it back to council for discussion or a motion. Oh, a hand just came up in the, sorry. Yes, Kristy Corley.
Hi, I was just wondering if you can discuss the applications for grants in the future that would help with our revenue side? And, you know, for such things, the plans that you might be doing with the roads, with getting rid of bathroom, the outhouses on Alpine Road and getting real bathrooms. I'm just wondering if you can talk about fire prevention and maintenance and be a little bit more detailed, but mainly what grants are we applying for this year and what do we expect to get? Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. I think that comment was really more addressed to the budget than the previous agenda item. So, I will ask staff to maybe follow up and do outline on that one. But thank you for your comment. Is there any further public comments? Okay, I see none now, so we'll bring it back to council then for discussion or emotion.
I'm happy to make a motion. I move that we adopt the resolution determining and establishing the town's fiscal year 2022-23 appropriations limit.
Thank you. There are seconds.
I will second.
Seconded by Sarah and Jeff. Melissa, can you call her all, please?
Councilmember Durin.
I.
Councilmember Alex.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wernicke.
Hi.
Mayor Hughes.
Hi. Thank you. Okay. That brings us to item seven, council liaison committee regional agency reports. Who would like to go first? Anybody? Here I am. I would turn to you first.
Okay, I have a few. Okay, my first one was on the 9th of June. It was a CCG board meeting. There was a fantastic presentation on the Safe Roots to School program by Teresa Valdez-Kelly. The Safe Roots to School program started in 2011. CCG partnered with the County Department of Education. I remember that day well. And over the years, many other partners have joined and they have really expanded the program. I wanted to highlight a few things. The one, the one program they have that I think is, is just so good, and I wish we would do it here, is called Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. I don't know if you guys know who Ruby Bridges was. She was born in 1954 and she's a civil rights activist. And she was the first African-American child to desegregate an all-white school in Louisiana. It was called William France Elementary School. And it was a harrowing, harrowing experience that continued for a long time. Anyway, they, they, the Safe Roots to School program in San Mateo County started this Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day in November. And it's been so successful. And in fact, the children, when we were back in public, the children came and presented it to us pre-pandemic. It has been so successful that Ruby Bridges herself has, has brought it into her foundation and it's spread all over the country. So, I would love it if our school district might look into doing that. Okay, we also, they talked about the future of Safe Roots to School in the county because it helps with less traffic congestion, better air quality, greener, healthier communities, more self-reliant kids. And the kids also learned a lot of traffic skills. So, that was fantastic. And then we went to our budget. We adopted our budget for fiscal year 2022-2023. There wasn't a lot in ledge. I think the budget bill what had to be passed by June 15 and it was. But that doesn't mean that it's finalized. Jeremy probably knows a lot more about this than, than I do. But I think it has to be adopted by July 15. The only legislation that CCG ledge committee was interested in was SB 917, which is revisions to the seamless Becker bill. And that has to do with bringing together everything bar and caltrain and buses. And the other one was SB 1944. It's a Brown Act bill that says as long as we have a quorum of in-person, I guess council members, we can act remotely without stating our address. Otherwise, when this all goes away, Jeff and John would have to have their address posted publicly because they're not at the meeting and they'd have to have it on their front door. And people could actually go to your house, just so you know. There was a presentation on the reissued municipal regional stormwater permit 3.0. I believe Woodside and Portola Valley went to the hearing at the Water Quality Board in Oakland. This is a even more onerous permit law that is going to be, really hit towns like Portola Valley hard because we don't have the depth of staff to do this work. And unfortunately, the Water Quality Board did not accept most of our changes, but a few of them. So, we still will have CCG staff to help us with that permit. Okay. And then there was a report on intelligent transit signal priority. Here's yet another acronym. And this is a, this is a pilot that they're doing in East Palo Alto. It's a cloud-based AI-powered tragic transit signal priority system. But what it, they've got 40 SAM trans buses with GPS trackers. And so, the AI robot continually, I always think of that because my ex-husband just scared my now spirit child so much about the world being taken over by robots and actually think it is happening. And you do too, don't you, Craig? Yeah. Anyway, so the robot continuously learns and adopts to changes in the traffic and ridership patterns so that they can like figure out the intersections that are going to delay the buses and, and then alleviate that problem and get the buses. They figured out they can get the north buses 18% faster and the south buses 7% faster. And it's also really good on left turns. And then the other item on the agenda, and I think this is what Christie was referring to, is the OBag 3 call for projects. This is the third cycle of OBag. This is the way that MTC distributes the federal transportation funding down to the cities. They called for projects in May 11. They're due July 1. It's a four-year funding period. And there's 32.6 million available for San Mateo County in climate conservation and resilience, complete streets and community choices, bicycle pad are part of the complete streets. There's some that wouldn't pertain to us like the multimodal systems or the station improvements. But yeah, there isn't much time left, but I don't know that we have a project ready to go. But if we did, we would probably have a good chance of getting it funded. And I think that was it. Oh, there is a vacancy on CMEC. That's Conservation, Congestion Management, Environmental Quality Committee for an elected official, if any of you are interested. That's actually kind of hot committee. Then I went to the San Mateo County Express Lines JPA meeting. This was also our budget. And as you can imagine, the monies are not coming in as we kind of hoped they would a couple of years ago. Because of COVID, the traffic is not back to where it was, which is, you know, great if you're traveling, but not great if you want people to ride in those express lanes and spend money. So, the TA, Transportation Authority and CCG are gonna have to backfill a little bit. I also asked about our loan. If you will recall, the TA helped us get a hundred million dollar loan at a variable rate extremely low, but things have changed a little bit and they're gonna give us more information for the next meeting. And I don't think we're going off a cliff, but it's a little challenging right now. Okay, and then the update on the operations. Every month we go up a little bit, we make a little bit more revenue. They're finally getting the the violation notices out now. These are for people who are in the lanes and aren't supposed to be. The Community Benefits Transportation Program, that's our equity program. Since May, we have distributed, distributed 25 Flex and 243 Clipper cards. This is being distributed through Samaritan House. Then they elected a new chair and vice chair. Rico Medina is the chair. Lysia Geta is the vice chair. The Carter Ma, who is the current CEO, is retiring. Jim Hartnett retired several months ago, so they're looking for a new person. CCG, excuse me, Caltrain will have a different executive director. They, they tried, they tried to remind us that we're still in the startup period and this is a long-term project. Our equity program still is leading edge. We're the only express lane in the country that has this. express lane in the country that has this robust and equity program. The San Mateo County Library JPA was on the 13th. And it was in person at the new Brisbane Library. And if you ever go to Brisbane, I really encourage you to go to the library. It's on their main street. And it just, you know, we're, we're, I don't know what was there before, but they've crammed an entire library in there and it seems spacious. It's really beautiful. It has some incredible butterfly sculptures hanging from the ceiling. It has a rain water tank where it's, you know, the water's coming off the eaves. It has, I think it has a maker room. It's got, you know, children's area. It's got quiet area. So, and the architect, Siegel and Strain, the same architect that did our buildings. We approved our budget. The director announced the summer learning challenge and the big left inspiring summers will be starting. They get started, actually. The Maker Mobile is coming this summer. That's a maker space in a van. And that's partnering, we're partnering with the Office of Sustainability for that one. Atherton Library grand opening was June 4. I wasn't able to go, but I heard it is fantastic library. And what is that? Madame Colette, the bakery, they're going to have an outpost there, but not till the fall. And their new tradition, they started this when they opened the Half Moon Bay Library, is that they have a banner and then the kids run through it. And that's always fun. Our first digital lab is at the Atherton Library. And okay, she also announced that there are state infrastructure grants that were submitted. Applications for the East Palo Alto Library, the Pacifica Library and North Barocks to do, I think, some remodeling. This is the first time in over a decade that states had money for these kind of grants. We have a new chair, Sarah McDowell from San Carlos, and a vice chair, Karen Cunningham from Brisbane. And then we talked about whether we want to do meetings virtually or in person. And a few months, we can do the hybrid meetings at the county library admin building. So I think we're shooting to have a in-person in September. Sustainability Committee met on the 16th. Oh, Levy always had Levine, is it Lavinda or Lavina? I call her Levy, Levy Taylor. She always has some juicy tidbits to share. She said she saw someone on her cul-de-sac installing a smart meter. So she went up to him and first pointed out that it was at a vacant house. Then she asked, why is she, why is he installing a smart meter here in a vacant house? He said, I have no idea why I'm doing it here. They just told me to. They, he also said he was very new, and this is true. They've had a lot of trouble getting installers. They're all new. And there was no, I guess, notification to the owner of the property. So that's some good information. Then there was a woman in the audience who lives on Westridge who said that someone was at her house installing a water meter. This is, she lives on West, uh, Westridge, close to Alpine. And again, there was no notification. So I, did I give them? Did I talk about our meeting with Cal Water at the last council meeting? Okay, so Cal Water had said they were going to notify people. So this isn't happening. And we will talk to Dawn at Cal Water. Our backup power battery in the library has been loaned out five times. Then there was a presentation by two women, Aviada Atadai and Viviana Belaza from Green Waste called What Goes Where. So they explained precisely where to put what in which cart. So in the green cart, only yard trimmings, no food. In the blue recyclables, metal, glass, plastic, paper, e-waste, clean and dry. Very important. Clean and dry. And then everything else goes in the little gray that says compostables. That's just a really misleading name. One thing she said, like if you have a pizza box where the food has stained the box, tear that off, put it in the gray one and then put the unstained cardboard in the blue one and no sticky foods in the jars. And just a whole bunch of details on that stuff. And again, the batteries you put in a plastic thing on top of the cart. You can even do motor oil and filters if you have the motor oil in a jug that's capped. You can't, any kind of chemicals for essence stuff. You've got to make your appointment at the hazardous waste place, which is, I go there a lot. It's right over by the elections office in San Mateo County. And I asked if the committee could do a tour of the Murph. That's the place where they process everything. And she said, not now, but soon. Then there was a whole bunch of questions. And if you would like to watch this presentation, I believe it's up on the website. Composting day. So Nature and Science would like to do a composting day in October or November. So Bonnie and Brooke from Nature and Science came to ask to explain what composting day is and to ask if this committee sustainability would like to partner with them. And I think I'm really looking forward to compost day myself. And they're going to have all sorts of hands-on things, do-it-yourself stuff to purchase. You know, vendors, videos, presentations. It'll be a one to four in an afternoon. Apparently the schools are doing a really good job at composting. They're using the hungry bins. And she said, we need to like catch up with that. We need the adults to catch up with them. And for composting options, you could do a hungry bin. You can do a regular worm bin. You can do a Tumblr. You can do a DIY with baskets and a trash can. You could do a bin station or you can just do a big pile, which Stefan Unash does and gave us a little picture of his big pile in the backyard. But there, there are all sorts of other cool things. Have you ever heard of P E L A Lomi? It's this little composter that can go on the, I'm sorry, I'm geeking out over this, but I really like compost. Can go right in the, in the kitchen, like by the sink and it grinds it all up right there. So to make a long story short, yes, they would be delighted to help. And I suggested they talk to Conservation and so they will. The new business was reviewing the draft housing element. That would be any sustainability related matters. And they'd already done it. And so they, I think they pretty much talked about what they'd already talked about. A checklist around ministerial review of ADUs, all-electric, EV charger, charge-ready, et cetera. Then they had some questions, which I took. Race inequity committee meeting was supposed to be on Tuesday, June 14 at 6:30 PM. We could not get in for a variety of reasons. I believe that will be fixed for the next meeting. So we called it at seven. They do have a meeting. They rescheduled a meeting with one item. It's the housing element, the furthering, you know, fair housing action piece. And that's on June 30, I think at 6:30. It's on the website. Then there was a special meeting of the planning commission on June 15. So for those of you who are on the HE committee to take a little nap now because this is all going to be old news to you since you just had a meeting. So Laura went over the history. As of this time, the Housing Committee had met 12 times since August. Now it's 13. You know, she went over the, some of the key things that she wanted them to think about, the opt-in zone upzoning. You know, do you want to keep the affiliated housing program? She explained the opt-in rezoning, et cetera, et cetera. But what she wanted them to focus on, or she also liked by SB 9, and how that's different from opt-in zoning. Then she talked, she said she wanted them to focus on section six, adequate sites, section seven, goals, policies and programs. So I'll just give you some of the questions from the commissioners. Here's, I'm not going to say who asked what. I'll just read some of the questions. Why haven't we advanced the other elements on the general plan in whole or previously? And actually Laura or Cara answered every single one of these questions. Why did you choose 92 ADUs? What formula did you use? Roberts parking lot, how many units were you thinking of building there even though, well, actually she said Roberts parking lots off the list. But in, in that area, if you zone for 20 units an acre, how does the density bonus fit in? Have you talked to our affiliated housing partners to see how they feel about some of these numbers? Ford Field. Why did you choose 50 units? Why, and then here's some more. Why isn't the priory on the site list? What about mid pen Hawthorns? Have you compared what we're doing with Woodside and Atherton since their ADU numbers are much higher? And then there was this whole sunset provision and sunrise provision, which I'm going to just leave. And then whoever talks about housing element committee can talk about it. Then there was a discussion about process. Should we have one or two meetings? Well, they're going to have two. What about the additional sections of the housing element that aren't on the table right now? What about the impact on the other elements of the general plan? What about our water and service capacity? What don't we need to do in EIR? I mean, I'm just, what about objective standards for design review? Why aren't we using what we used before, you know, for formula? How do the affiliated housing partners get runners? If you, if you choose to upzone your property in the opt-in program, do you have to submit a plan? And then from the public, Susan Ford Dorsey came and discussed the gift of land to the town and how she believes what she believes that agreement meant. And then there were a lot, and I'll tell you some of the opposition, opposition to opt-in zoning. Oh, thought the buffer was too high. Hates often, I put hates there. Oh, there were questions about, again, about Ford field and density bonus. How many, if you say 50, how many is it really going to be? And then there were comments about Glen Oaks where Isola Horse Equestrian Center is and, you know, that there were a lot of families who really loved that program and that business. I think that's, oh, please don't subordinate our safety to housing. So you get the gist of it. Okay, so it was a, it was a long meeting. It was a very well-vetted meeting. And then what, when they spoke, here's what the commissioner said. Want to be sure the pivots were taken for a good reason. And then complain about the minutes because right now they're action minutes. And if you really want to know what happened, you have to listen to the meetings and that does take a lot of time. Especially when the meetings have been like six hours. Want to know about the legal treatment of Ford Field. Concerned about a lot of units in the Nathorse area. Concerned about opt-in. Add more ADU and fight with HCD. Buffer is too high. We don't want to overdevelop. Let's look at Woodside, Atherton, Los Altos Hills. We're using a lot more ADUs. Here's one commissioner said, this is a good compromise. Glad we kept the commercial businesses intact. Glad we didn't outhorse light, like the affiliated housing. It's good to look at other cities, but remember that the mayor of Atherton essentially said, you know, you basically don't think this is going to pass, but we don't care. We'll deal with it later. I don't want to give up the upzoning. I think that there's a lot of older people who want to downsize and live with other old people. You know, old people communes, right? Like the baby boomers, we came from the communes and we want it in. I feel sick about the Oak Tree at Ford, but I don't see any other solutions. This is the best given all the constraints. Then there's the sunrise idea. I'm going to keep going down. There's some other stuff. One commissioner who's also on the Housing Summit Committee said the committee worked really hard on this to come up with the 20%. She was trying to explain to them what, how they arrived at all these compromises. There was, Laura was kind of funny. She said, she reminded them all that she could send the housing element in right now. There is no requirement for it to go to the planning commission or even the town council. But she was just kidding. Then my last one, I'm actually hoarse from talking so much. I've been really spending a lot of time alone, so it's really weird to talk this much. I talk to my dogs, but not to this extent. Hey, commute.org had a virtual meeting, a presentation on the San Mateo County Bike Champion of the Year, who was Amal Pat Wardian, a postdoctoral scientist working at the Linear Accelerator at Stanford, who lives in Redwood City. He, I wrote down some of his words. He said, this is a recognition for bicycling as a way of life. We have a decent bicycle infrastructure here. But I have lived in places like Madison, Wisconsin, where the infrastructure is better. It's easy to commute on bicycles. We should learn from other places in the US so that bicycling is an integral part of life here on the peninsula. Okay. And basically work, this meeting was all about the work plan and the budget. And you know, most of their, their programs are commuter programs with shuttles for businesses. And I'm looking to see if there's anything of interest to anybody here. You know, they, they are going to have to be choosy a little bit of the root, you know, cut back on some of the roots. So John Ford, who's the ED, said, which of the 27 roots do you want to go to the map for? Sort of thing. Okay, so we, we passed it. And the executive director report, we have 20 of 21 routes in operation right now, wide range of performance. Okay, you know, and a lot of statistics. And our next meeting might be in person. We will wait and see. And I just wanted to mention one other thing. I went to a retirement party for a South San Francisco council member who actually retired two years ago, but she had to put off her party because of COVID. Carol Motsumoto, I know Jeff knows Carol and John knows Carol and Jeremy knows Carol. And Carol, there were a couple of things that I thought were interesting. Well, first, it was really fun for me because I saw people who I worked with for all these years. There were a lot of SAM trans people because Carol was on SAM trans and South San Francisco people and just a lot of council members. Kevin Mullen was there. Kevin Mullen is the assemblyman in the next district up and he's also running for Jackie Spear's seat and he's most likely going to get Jackie's seat in Congress. He made a speech about Carol and talked about how he doesn't believe in term limits for city councils. And geez, she must have, she must have been on that council for 20, what, 24 years? Really long time. And because he said to do the really big projects like in South San Francisco originally, it takes a really long time. I mean, it took eight years for Brandy and I to do the AMI. So I hear that. That was an interesting perspective. And then I was able to talk to a lot of SAM trans people, including the out, the ex-CEO Jim Hartnett about our, our loss of routes. Loss of buses here. And I know Christie has been a, just a great advocate for the buses. But we just don't have the ridership and SAM trans doesn't have the resources. And SAM, and what I found out was they are having trouble even getting bus drivers. So it was hard for them to have to eliminate two of our routes. But it was just one of those necessary things. And if things ever change, they are ready to listen to us. So that's it.
Okay, thank you. Kara?
Sure. Our PBSD meeting was canceled just because I think there were a bunch of conflicts on their side. My other committee of CAC and John gave a way better update about what's been going on with that than I ever could. The big meeting was the housing element on Monday, so I'll just add to. kind of how the how where the housing element committee landed as a follow up to the planning commission. So basically, the bulk of the agenda for the meeting on Monday was to react to the outcome of the planning commission meeting. And so I'll just kind of highlight the decisions that were made. It was another, you know, five plus hour meeting. We had great community attendance, over 80 people. And we focused on kind of six key areas, which I'll highlight. The first is the opt-in and there was debate about that. And in the end, at the very end of the meeting, we actually took, you know, not that there's a vote, but it was really just to get a sense of where the majority of people on the committee stood on all the different issues. And so on opt-in, there was a strong majority preferring the opt-in approach as an as an alternative offering to SB nine because it would provide more local control and enables dispersment, which has been, you know, considered a big priority from the community over the last 10 months. There's work to be done on the opt-in approach to refine it. And, you know, we're not anywhere close there. But I and I know Laura is continuing to work on that. But there was, there was strong support for including it in the housing element. In terms of Ford Field Park, there was also a strong majority support for that location. Just because the the consensus of the committee is that it's really the only realistic path in order to get our 50 very low income units, other than increased development at Nat Horse, which we of course know was strongly opposed by the Nat Horse neighbors. There was discussion, the third item was ADUs, JADUs. A lot of feedback from the community to consider those two separately. And so Laura has said that going forward, that will be part of how that's approached, that they'll be evaluated separately. But in terms of them together and using them for low income, there was unanimous rejection of that by the committee, that that could be a viable approach to fulfilling our very low income category. The committee was split on increasing the the currently we're at 92 units, which is just above what the three year trajectory would be. And the committee was split on keeping it there or inching it up a bit. And so that's kind of where that stands at this point. The committee was also split on changes to the buffer. There were some about half wanted to keep the buffer at 20%. Others were open, including myself, to keeping the buffer at 15% at the the higher rate, so the the moderate and above moderate, but maintaining the 20% for low and very low. In terms of the sunrise strategy, there was not strong support for this from the committee. The majority rejected that approach just feeling that it was really kind of kicking the can down the road in terms of disruption to the community and would add complexity and confusion. If and when a sunrise came up, there would be really no community discussion about it. It could happen three years later and then all of a sudden boom, there would be this other thing going on without, you know, the benefit of having it being dispersed broadly within the community as we have been doing over the last 10 months. That said, I do know the planning commission is still, there's a subcommittee that's created to evaluate that. So perhaps we will have some new learnings from the two commissioners who are looking at it and have an opportunity to reconsider it. But at this point, the housing element rejected that approach. And the last is Glen Oaks is just, there was a lot of feedback from the from community members on the call and support of that equestrian facility. We've heard from the trails committee about that as well. And various other people just about the 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 overall development across Alpine Road in general. And so if possible, there was consensus to curtail the total units at Glen Oaks, which to me is something that, you know, when I I have my little spreadsheet that I run seems like a possibility if we decrease the buffer for moderate and above moderate in particular. So Laura will take that back. And the next planning commission meeting is on the 29th. And we'll be talking about it here as a council at, is that our next meeting? The first meeting in July, so. That's that. Thank you.
Yeah, ad hoc housing element committee was my only meeting and Sarah and Mary Ann actually. Sarah Sarah did a good job of wrapping the points we specifically discussed and a lot of the the sort of both. A lot of the comments that Mary Ann went over were similar to the comments that we received from the public. I'd say that that ad hoc housing by and large kind of kept. I think they kept kind of the bones of the draft housing element intact for us to look at. You know, planning commission raised some things that I think by and large ad hoc mostly was not, you know, sort of didn't really. There was some, there's some dissent and you'll and you will hear directly from them as we're considering it. But, you know, I think I think you know, for example, with Ford Field, like several people were were uncomfortable about it. But everyone recognized that it probably was was a better solution than than the alternative, which would have been up zoning more of math worst. But, you know, I think I think we've, I think we have a really good draft that we'll be looking at. And we will, you know, you'll hear more detail from members of the committee, I'm sure, and members of the planning commission and the public. But I think we've kind of set the stage to have that discussion. So I I feel like it will be, it will be, you know, it'll be as long and contentious as all these meetings have been. But I think that the staff has actually done a really good job of positioning us to, you know, make our decision. And that's, that's the only, that was the only meeting I've had last two weeks.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, my only meeting was canceled, so I have nothing to report.
Okay. Let's see, I had trails meeting and there was been somewhat short, they had a lot of stuff on the agenda, so they kind of cut through a couple of the items. But one of the items was the discussion of the stables that since we don't have a horse committee, the trails committee should speak for the town equestrian community. And then the A bag general meeting, which was always a fun event, even when it's by Zoom. Lot of discussion of the A bag programs and all the stuff that they do. One in particular item that they were talking about at length is the A bag executive committee has been working on and there's what's it called Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, BFA, is planning to put together a, I believe it's bond measure for, I think they're targeting 2024, November 24 to raise a couple billion dollars Bay Area wide, so in the nine counties to go towards essentially underwriting subsidized and below marketable housing construction. So actual implementation of the housing elements of the of the counties and cities in the Bay Area. And so I think about them, they're talking about a total $10 billion measure, of which about a billion dollars would go to San Mateo County. And then it would propagate through from San Mateo County to the cities in San Mateo. And I don't know what that would actually end up meaning in terms of any money we might get. But there there, there is this potential pot of money. So they're spending the next, whatever it is, year and a half, going through the process of figuring out, okay, well, how much should it be? And how do you market it? Are people going to be interested in this or not? Getting signatures and getting it on a ballot and all that stuff. And then we approved the annual budget. So it was a long meeting because anytime you have to roll a call of 110 cities and nine counties, it takes a while. And and for every measure, right, for every motion. It's their, they're, they're in person, they're yeah, it's, 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 it's every big city and little town, you know, there's Portale Valley sitting next to San Francisco. It's quite something. And everybody gets one vote. And that was it. That was all I had. So let me see if there is any public comment on this item. So please raise your hand. Chrissy Corley.
Yes, thank you for taking my comment. I just wanted to add with the ad hoc housing committee meeting that the statement that everyone recognized that you need to use Ford Field as the solution. I don't believe I heard the same thing. I I heard at least four of the committee members, maybe even six, say that to keep working on other town owned sites and use Ford Field as the last resort and do some more research on that. So I just wanted to make that comment unless you feel I did not hear that. But I have attended every housing committee meeting and that's what I heard the other night. I also had a last minute question that was never answered, that if we do opt-in and you said that everyone was in strong support of opt-in. I'm not sure that's the case. I think I heard some committee members questioning whether opt-in is a good idea because it wipes out our zoning planning over for the general plan over a number of years. So with the opt-in, what will? You know, SB nine doesn't allow developers to buy two lots next to each other. They also SB nine requires that the owner that splits the lot has to remain for three years. So I think we're concerned with opt-in. How many lots in a row can developers buy? Can they buy out a neighborhood? And that is my my concern. So if someone could get back to us on that question, that is what I heard at the meeting. I mean, I asked at the meeting yet did not get a response. I'm also wondering, we are going with 30 very low, 30 low, 30 moderate and 10 above moderate. And for many months, it was five very low, 30 low, 50 moderate and 15 above moderate. So if you could just explain the change that our our planning director made that change, and I'm sure it's for a good reason. But if you could remind the public what the change was caused by, thank you.
Thank you, Christie. Again, this was not on tonight's agenda. It's sort of tangentially related to the update from the council members. I will, if any council member has a brief response, I'd let you.
The only thing, do you mind if I just? Christie, I said the majority, so it wasn't all. And, you know, I'm more than happy if you want to talk offline, but we we did take casual votes. And on Ford Field as well as opt-in, it was the majority, it was seven and four and eight and three. So that's a majority.
Thank you.
I'll just add that in terms of the ADU allocation, there are two different formulas you can use. Laura switched to a more aggressive formula and she's explained this at least once at a at a housing element committee, if not probably two or three times at this point. So if you go back and look at the old housing elements, I know she's, I know we've discussed it more than once within a meeting. So thank you.
Yeah, we we actually discussed it and agreed with Laura kind of early on, probably. And if we're in month 10, I'm going to guess it was in around month three or four that we made that decision.
Thanks. Okay, next hand I see is David Cardinal.
Thanks. Great reports. I just want to make one maybe footnote or clarification. It often comes off in these reports like Stanford is trying to buy the horse stables and turn them into something. I think it's important to note that they own them and they could shut them down probably tomorrow if they wanted to. I mean, they have a lease, but it is their land. We're, we're not saying we're going to force the horse stables to sell to them or whatever. And we can, you know, say we want to keep more horse boarding facilities, which is great, but it's their property and I think that's important to note. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next hand is Rita.
Thank you for taking my comment. And I'm very happy to hear that Isola and Glen Oaks are in part of the conversation. For Isola, my daughter has taken many classes there with the horses and a lot of people I know. And a lot of people don't think about that place, but many communities, you know, for some kids, it's the first time they're on a horse, you know, they go to Spring Down, they go to other places. But Isola just makes it work for a lot of kids that have never been exposed to a horse. And so if something happened at Glen Oaks, that business would be shut down forever. And, you know, I didn't mention at this meeting, I mentioned it at Monday's meeting. But Monday was Juneteenth, February holiday. I know that the town offices were not closed. But if it was Memorial Day, there would not have been a meeting on Monday evening. This is the first year that it has been celebrated across the nation. It's a day that is remembered by many, many people that have ancestors, you know, such as myself, as African American in this country, two and a half years after the slaves that should have never been enslaved freed. But then they were finally told in the state of Texas that they are free or were made to be free two and a half years after emancipation proclamation. But our offices, town offices were open that day. And this meeting did happen, the ad hoc housing element meeting did happen on Monday night. And, you know, perhaps for the future, you know, Monday is past. But perhaps for the future, we can be sensitive to those kind of days. Thank you for looking out for the horses. And thank you for listening to my comment.
Thank you, Rita. Okay, I see no more hands raised on this item. So that brings us to town manager report, Jeremy.
Thank you very much. Make my comments relatively brief. We'll be announcing next week a very exciting opportunity at the library, we'll be expanding the hours of the library. There'll be a press release that I was hoping to put out this week, the library is preparing it for us. But we're going to be mirroring the hours that existed. Other joint powers authority libraries, including Woodside. So that looks like during the week up to eight o'clock and then Sunday hours. So we're really appreciative of the library to be doing that. The why wildfire preparedness committee is due to the success of their wildfire fair, they're going to be holding that fair on an annual basis. So we're excited that will be the case. There's even been some conversation about doing it more than once a year. The open space acquisition advisory committee is looking to hold a meeting on July 7th. They haven't met this year and they'll be discussing the item related to the 2% UT use for maintenance. The town is putting together a committee for an art donation. Resident is eager to donate a horse sculpture to the town. And we have a process where we bring together council members and committee members and staff to to take that on. So there'll be more to speak to once we have that meeting. I did want to mention that Howard Young, our public works director recently celebrated his 20th year with the town. And it's an extraordinary achievement anywhere. And I think particularly these days, that's even more extraordinary. So thank you, Howard, for your commitment to our community. Finally, wanted to comment briefly about the fire that occurred yesterday at Edgewood Park. Enormous appreciation for Woodside Fire, Cal Fire, Sheriff's Office, Department of Public Management and all the mutual aid partner agencies for their swift response. I wanted to share that yesterday did include an evacuation of one zone of Woodside from the Zon Haven tool and tool and two from unincorporated Sematary County. And the sheriff's office was able to have approximately 35 deputies on site to assist with the evacuations within about 45 minutes. And within an hour after that, they had another 40 additional deputies at Kynect College in case there were additional evacuations. Very comforting to hear that the plan that they have in place works. It's the plan that they would use in our community. Very appreciative of that. That that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council member questions? Ryan, you have your usual question for Jeremy?
Would you like me to ask?
That would be fine.
Well, I thought I was going to wait and ask it once a month rather than every two weeks. But sure, Jeremy, would you like to update us on staff time spent on? Well, I thought I was going to wait and ask it once a month rather than every two weeks, but sure, Jeremy, would you like to update us on staff time spent on? Lawsuits and any substantial PRA requests, not the little small ones that, you know, that. Come in weekly from our residents, but like the big, huge chunky ones that I think are mostly part of the lawsuits. Have there been a lot of staff time spent on these things?
Well, and can I, can I, uh, amend that by also asking about legal fees? An update on total legal fees to date?
Yeah, though that's, yeah, same thing.
Thank you. Uh, the staff, um, that's involved is primarily the assistant town manager, Melvin Gaines and myself. And at this point, I would say that staff has spent approximately 20 hours, uh, to 25 hours, um, on, uh, the most recent set of, um. Uh, PRA requests and, uh, Cara, if you want to speak to the legal service side.
Yes, thank you. Um, so in terms of the public records requests, um, in May, we, um. We, uh, spent 17.9 hours, um. Responding to major public records act requests and so far in June, we have spent 23 hours and obviously June is not over yet. Um, and then for the, um, litigation, we, we haven't yet really entered the phase of litigation. And so our, our billing is, um, is not entirely, um, allocated to, to the lawsuit. But we have spent approximately, um, 20 hours in connection with the, um, 20 to 30 hours in connection with the cease and desist notice. And, um, the, um, the pending lawsuit.
Thank you.
So that's, I mean, that sounds like it's a total of, uh. Almost 70 hours. Since May, um, the collective.
I believe that's about right. Yeah.
Yeah, we're legal.
Right, for legal. So over $20,000 in legal fees so far.
Yes.
That's, that was the question I had. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Any further council questions? Nope, I will go to public comment then. Is there any public comment on this item? Let's see, no hands raised. So we will go to agenda item nine, council digests, June 9th and June 16th. Is there anything from June 9th?
No, but I, I had one little, uh, question announcement I forgot to make. There is a council of cities dinner in person in East Palo Alto on Friday night. Um, they're holding it, the Boys and Girls Club. I'm going and anybody who would like to go with me, I would be happy to drive. As long as you aren't allergic to dog hair because my car has a lot of dog hair.
Okay, thank you. Um, anything from June 16th digest? Nope, is there any public comment on this item? I see no hands raised. Okay, then item 10, adjourned close session. Um, I would like to adjourn to close session tonight. Um, in honor of Chip McIntosh, he was a longtime town volunteer. Um, community member, resident, uh, planning commissioner, uh, on the open space acquisition committee who, um. Gave much of his time, uh. Helping the town reviewing housing applications, um, assisting in purchase of open space and major open space properties and. Working behind the scenes extensively with, um, residents to encourage their appreciation of open space donations to the town to support open space efforts. Um, and helping preserve town that we all enjoy so much. Um, Jeremy. Yeah.
I, I would just say, um, you know, on behalf of the staff, uh, we were very saddened to hear of Chip's passing, uh, just an incredible. Incredible human being who, as you said, Craig gave a lot of, a lot of time, uh, to the town. Uh, today, uh. The staff, we held our quarterly lunch together, um, and Melvin and I bought everybody, uh, burritos and we wrecked. We noticed that most of us were sitting at the table that Chip donated to town center when, uh, town center was redone in, uh, 2017. Um, so it was, uh, it was a nice moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, with that, there are motions for going to close session. Oh, actually, before we do, I suppose, um, I need to offer the public an opportunity to. Comment on our close session item, um, which is item 10A. Is there any public comment on item 10A? Okay, I see no hands raised, so, um, we will then adjourn to close session. Um. And I will be closing down the meeting. If you are a member of the public who is here, you can leave now. Um, if not. In the next minute or two, um, we'll be. Removing you from the meeting so that we can go to close session. So thank you for coming tonight. Thanks for participating and we'll see you all next time. Um, and I guess I can stop the recording.